...application and Spiro, I guess you're here to give us a... we've got three of them here, four of them actually, so just very, very brief overviews of what each of these committees are doing or each application and then we'll move forward. All right? So I guess you need the money for the application. There you go. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for having us here. So we're basically, we submitted an application for the installation of a spray pad at Woodlawn Park.
It's been in our master plan since our 2012 meeting with the neighbors and since then we've done several redevelopment projects and we're on the, we're approaching the final, final finish line. So we submitted our application to get the spray pad installed at Woodlawn Park. It's been 20 years since Woodlawn has had any access to water feature or pool areas. So it's definitely a need in the community. So our, our application was approved and we're looking to get a city's final okay on that to move forward.
Any questions? Anything else? Everything was in the packet? All in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks guys. Thanks for coming and welcome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The Goose Hill neighborhood, uh, application. Ms. Novak, you're gonna represent Goose Hill, if you may? Thank you.
I'm going to fill the microphone.
Well, this is, this is for the TV. So yeah, you're not giving...
My name is Margaret Novak. I'm representing the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association. As Spiro's group, our neighborhood association put in a proposal to the Schenectady Foundation Thriving Neighborhoods Challenge and it was to install some trash cans along major thorough fairs in the Goose Hill neighborhood, not just Van Veken Avenue but elsewhere on the north side. And that's the physical component of the proposal and then there's an educational component where we hope to have a program in the schools to bring to people's attention, especially young people's attention, that littering is not a cool thing to do. So the, the physical aspect is the placing of the cans, the purchase of the cans and for that we're looking for, and actually the Schenectady Foundation has asked that we have a commitment from the city to purchase the cans, perhaps using the city's buying power and also to commit to maintaining them, i.e. emptying them on the regular trash days for the, whatever street they're on. I think that's about it. So we're, we're looking for a commitment from the city in order to be able to present that. We have to present to the Schenectady Foundation in early December and that's one thing that they were asking for in, in order to move forward to the next funding. Yes, the next funding.
Any questions or concerns, Ms. Novak? Ms. Paul Manny, second. Karen Z. W., all in favor say aye. Thank you. Good meeting. Uh, Bellevue Neighborhood Association as well. And who's presenting?
Ray Fok. He's the president.
That's right. All right.
For the Bellevue Preservation Incorporated, you know, the Bellevue Neighborhood Group. For quite a few years, we've had cleanup in the park day and it's been around the tennis courts that are overgrown with trees and bushes and this has provided a public safety concern because the police patrolling cannot see anything from the road and the courts haven't been used in years. So we proposed, we had a board meeting and we decided that it would be a good idea to put a couple of basketball courts in place of these tennis courts and cut down all the brush that hides access to the park. We'd also like to add some handicap parking next to the courts, you know, because it's a large area. And in addition, um, it's, it's been quite a few years after the, I think it's Lee, the Lee hurricane storm and then knocked down a bunch of trees in the woods there. And there used to be an unofficial trail that we'd like to improve, remove some trees, add some mulch and turn it into a bike hike trail and this would allow more people to enjoy the park and use the park. And in addition, there's a basketball court behind the pool that's out of sight from the road and that has encouraged vandalism in the area. So we'd like to take that out. So, you know, improved access to the public would hopefully make it less likely to have vandalism occur. And the city, I've talked to the city parks and, you know, they've given me some prices for stuff. So in addition, it's, you know, the Schenectady Foundation, we're applying for a grant and they gave us the first round of approval.
Mr. Paul Manny, second. Karen Z. W., all in favor say aye. Thank you. And our last one is the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association and Ms. Porter, you're gonna present?
I am. So on behalf of the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association, our president's here as well as the secretary here as well. We submitted an application to the Thriving Neighborhoods Challenge and invited to do round two. And our topic is around beautification and clean environment as well as public safety. In 2014, the Neighborhood Association placed trash cans on Albany Street, the main business thoroughfare, and to address the litter problem. And so what this application is to increase the number of trash cans and also to do some education around littering or the reasons not to litter and how it affects the environment. We, I've already spoken with Goose Hill because they're doing a similar project and talked about how we could share some resources in there and some information. We have many, many partners on board, also asking the CDT to help us as well so that we spread the message not just within Hamilton Hill but throughout the city of Schenectady. And part of our project also will be crime prevention through environmental design. So we'll be working with local businesses to talk about how they can help us with this project, not only by putting out trash cans but also how the surroundings of their stores and educate people about the surroundings of their stores, how to invite crimes or maybe more inviting let alone crime. So Neighborhood Association is coming to the council to ask for support, the resolution to support that we move forward with our application.
Very good. Any questions or concerns? Second. Second by Ms. Paul Manny, all in favor say aye. And again, on behalf of the council, thank you very much to the four neighborhood associations and groups that are working on these projects. We had one a couple of weeks ago from Chad Putman as well. And again, it's just a great commitment that we're having by our residents here in the city of Schenectady and again, a great project. So much success to everybody here and thank you very much for your work. Moving on, our next item, firm of action quarterly report. Mr. Ron Gardner. If you folks want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. If you want to leave, you can certainly go participate and grab some of the free snacks out there that are out there. But we don't want to bore you. We don't want to bore you that I'm here. Might be a little boring in here. Right? You going outside?
No.
All right. All right. You got it.
All right. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to come here. On the front page there, you have a summary of the construction activities that currently gone on since the, since the last quarter and you can, you can go through that. I won't bore you with the, the details of that. But, but again, we'll continue to work with all of the firms and one thing I do want to highlight with the, one of the construction projects with Empire Paving, they had the street paving project this year. And I wanted to comment on their efforts in terms of what they've been doing to reach out to get more local participation, minority and women participation on the project. And they really did an exceptional job in terms of their outreach, their commitment to genuinely negotiate in good faith with several contractors. And they also went to hire a, one of our local students that went through our training program and they brought him onto the project and he's, he's been very, very successful in terms of working with them. So it was a phenomenal opportunity. And, and another thing that was so unique about this is that Chris Longo, one of the principals of the company, came to the class and met the individuals and talked about his company and what he was looking for and he did follow through and, and hire somebody. And this was an individual that had challenges with transportation to a different job cycle. That's always a barrier when it comes to the construction projects or whatever. And they would make arrangements to pick him up and get him to the sites and all those type of things. So I really wanted to make sure that I gave, you know, crudos to, to those guys. Their entire family has been absolutely phenomenal in this project and I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that. The, the other part, the, the next section, we just completed the, our training program, the introductory construction skills and the NCCR core. And the first part, you have a syllabus of a detailed breakdown of the 125 hour course that they, that they completed and description of what it is. The next section is a breakdown of the, the work from the course. So you have the, you know, the different sections that they took that account up to the 125 hours. You see the scores, they are the grades, if you will, and the accomplishment that they had, the credentials that they came out of this program with. They came out with the, obviously the NCCR credential, which is a nationally recognized program that recognized their work in terms of entry into the industry. They came out with, they had the OSHA 10, they got the OSHA 30, they had the EPA lead certification. And, and I, I just want to say congratulations to all those folks because they did a phenomenal job in terms of putting forth the effort and, you know, making it happen. But we also have a phenomenal team in terms of make, what makes all this stuff happen and what's different about this program and the other training program is what goes on after the fact. So they got this and now what? So we continue to work with them through our partners with development here, you know, Christian, Sylvia, Dan downstairs, our partners over at the college and the career counseling center. So we'll continue to work with each and every one of these folks on a very, on a daily basis to make sure that they get the opportunities, that we're matching them up with contractors, that we're constantly developing our pool of resources to put them into, development opportunity with, you know, with the contractors. So, so it's becoming a real serious, hoganic approach and people are starting to reach out to us in terms of, you know, recognizing credentials and asking about these folks and inquiring about them and with participating in, you know, all type of job fairs and, you know, it's just a whole lot of outreach thing. So, so it's a phenomenal success in that regard and, and I think it's been enormously well received and now the real work began in terms of how do we place these folks and you'll see some information in there in terms of what's happening to them now in case you want to know, you know, how they work and how they've been applied and what, you know, so that data is in there as well. So that's, that's where we are. Any questions?
Any questions? Again, on behalf of the entire council, we certainly want to thank you for your efforts. Myself and Councilman Paul Manny visited you a few weeks ago up at SCCC to see some of the classes and just great, great relationships with you and you know, usually. So thank you very much for your work. Thank you. All righty. The last thing here is December council meeting schedule, something I brought up with the holiday schedule in December. I look back and a few years ago it was done as well because we would have been stuck in that Christmas week. So what I'm proposing to move forward here today is to essentially just have two meetings in December, have our committee meeting moved to December 10th and then the full council meeting on December 17th. And we'd be eliminating the 3rd and of course, the, the 26th of December. We've already sent some emails out to some of our department heads, I spoke with the mayor. Everybody seems to be on board with this. If there isn't, anyway, if we move last minute, we can certainly do that. But it seems that there was no objection with our personnel here. Again, it's been done in the past here, so this would not be the first. So again, we would have our city committee meeting on the 10th, full council meeting on the 17th of December. Ms. Ross.
So I believe New Year's Eve also falls on a Monday. Would we be meeting that day? Have we considered what that looks like going forward?
When we wouldn't...
We wouldn't be meeting that week, so we, our next one would be until the 7th.
The 7th one?
Right. Right. So then it'd be, we'd be back on schedule beginning for 7, 14 and the 4. It works out pretty good. So I think the dates that you have in here, Chuck, are correct, the way this is worded?
We have it on the straight.
That's what I thought. There was something in there. Okay. All right. Because I thought it was just myself and I don't want to complicate you. So that second from the last paragraph there is to be, is to be removed. The city clerk has directed post-public notice of the 17th and 24th. So that's going to be out. All right?
I'll move.
Mr. Paul Manny, this Karen Z. W., all in favor say aye. Thank you. Anything else to come before our committee here this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Ms. Karen Z. W., all in favor say aye. Thank you. Our committee is adjourned.
Call order to the finance committee. The first items up are the DSA, the 2019 budget. I will forewarn everybody, given the changes in the schedule to the December meetings, we will look to make a motion to move this forward to vote on November 26th contingent upon no major or any sort of contention or disagreement from the public. Mr. Slango.
There you go, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm Jim Slango with the DSAIC, also here with our assistant director, Tommy Maris.
And board president Heather Peterson and board member Ray Legier. Here to present our 2019 downtown special assessment district budget. As a reminder, this is a portion of our overall operating budget that the city council approves for us every year. And we're really looking at page one of the budget that we passed out. And as you can see, several years ago, we talked to you about a strategy that our board has implemented to do a nominal increase of our overall assessment every year to make up for the, the known coming loss of a $50,000 annual payment that we apply towards our budget from the sale of parking lots some, some years ago. So we're doing the same strategy this year, nominal 2% increase going to 280, 160. And along those lines, there is the minimum participation fee that any property owner will pay down here and that also falls along the 2% line going from 290 to 295. And then on page three of the overall budget, you can see how this assessment portion of our revenue fits into the overall, overall budget for the DSAIC for the entire year. So if there's any particular questions, I'm happy to answer.
Motion by Mr. Lou Barron. Second by Mrs. Z. W., all in favor. Aye. Thank you.
And quick note, tomorrow morning, we're going to be having a press conference with Mayor Retard.
In the Capitol Region Chamber to announce small business Saturday, coming up this Saturday in Schenectady. So please be sure to come out on the 24th and shop locally and support our independent businesses.
Very good. Thank you. Excellent. Good.
Next is the Upper Union Street bid, 2019 budget. I do not believe there's anyone here to present that, but we will follow along the same line of thought with the meeting. Are there, I can't answer the questions, but any objections moving forward? Let's see, none?
Make a motion.
Ms. Z. W., second. Ms. Lou Barron, all in favor.
All right.
Next on the agenda is street cutouts. This is something that a number of us have had complaints about throughout the last several months in particular, if not longer. And we've been trying to work on something that would hopefully help alleviate the situation. Current code states that there's permit holders guarantee the restoration of the work for a period of up to five years after acceptance of the permit, permanent restoration. As you know, the street cutouts seem to be a pretty big issue, if not epidemic in the city and looking to have just a discussion, if not some ideas or moving forward on something to try to alleviate the situation. One of the things that's been brought up and discussed is having those who are doing the street cutouts make an appointment with the inspector so that the business isn't delayed costing them money, but the inspectors actually be on site to make sure that the hole is filled properly above the base layer. Hopefully this would help alleviate the issues with street cutouts because we know that they do sink and while we can get them repaired, oftentimes there's a huge delay. The city can charge for those if there's question as to whether or not fees have been collected or if anything's being done in that regard. So that's just one idea that's been brought up as far as trying to solve that problem, but looking to see if there's perhaps any other or any willingness to move forward on adding that to the code. Mr. Iggy.
I discussed this with you before. I think we should be looking at where a certain percentage of the streets have been cutouts as it's calling out some of the gas line replacements, that we should have a requirement that it be repaid, because just having a bunch of cutouts, every house is, it's going to fail eventually in how, how well it's inspected and then the city will have to repay eventually.
I think Mr. Falatigo has some information on that.
Not really, but I, I want to know.
Good job. Good.
I checked in the next, I remember when we made the change, when you made the change in 2015, that was something that was discussed and I did not see that it had been moved forward.
Well, that's information itself, so that's actually maybe a good suggestion. I don't know if there's, how everybody else feels about trying to move something along those lines, but try to solve this.
It doesn't mean for just a regular water lateral replacement, but when there's major cutouts being done, which are being done all through the city, it does compromise our streets and I'd like to see a requirement or something like that.
There have been times where National Grid has been doing major work and it's coincided with our paving program. So rather than do the patchwork, they have just given us money to subsidize or pay a proportionate amount of repaving in the total street. So that, you know, it's easier said than done, getting those schedules to line up with the pace.
That's my cherry street. The street paid bigger before and now it's all chapped up. Maybe we can, if we think it's possible, we could get something in place to make it be required then. What's your opinion on that?
Well, they will argue, again, depending on, they become, I understand would be engineering decision. So if you have to set a certain percentage of the road surface being disturbed, then it would qualify and, you know, what's the number? They're not going to do it if they're doing 20%. They're not going to subsidize the 80%. But what is happening now are the gas line replacements, which you all let happen, let the system in place, but the repair work for replacing those cutouts widely varies. There's some that are going to be fine, they're going to last forever and some that are just being put in in a substandard manner that are failing almost immediately or clearly within the first winter cycle, which is even showing up. So it becomes, what are the criteria that the council like in place, engineering department and their ability to go out and actually do the documentation enforcement and the end product becomes the repair work that we want done on the streets.
I'm kind of thinking this is two-pronged. Mr. Iggy's mostly getting out of the National Grid, but I'm also thinking with the, the water laterals and the replacements, those tend to fail quite often. I was thinking perhaps have the inspector there, one, make an appointment so the business doesn't bear any cost. The inspector goes, make sure it's filled properly. Because these, these tend to fail at least it seems at a higher rate lately and to try to solve it.
If you go back through the scenario you're looking to have again...
So let's say, you know, they put in the base layer, the, let's say I'm a plumber, I did the water thing. I'm going to fill in the hole. I'm making a, make an appointment with the inspector at, all right, 1 o'clock on Friday. I'm going to completely fill this hole the rest of the way. The inspector says, yes, I'm available that time, I will be there. Or no, I can't be there until 2:00. Make an appointment, show up, make sure the hole's filled properly from the onset.
With, again, my understanding, there are very few of those type of repairs that are done as planned events. They are usually the result of a failure in the water line. So you have super saturated subsurface that even when they compact to the standards, the water is still there and as that drains out, dries out, it creates some factors. And as it, you know, a nice July evening when you're fixing it is a lot different than January, February, March, when we actually get most of the water main breaks when they've gone through the freeze saw cycle. So you have, there's wide variance in terms of what that material is. And so even doing a restoration that we would all say is fine, there's hydrology or other factors that sometimes are not apparent in completing the repair that manifest themselves as, the surface starts to slump down the road. Again, is it, sometimes it's almost immediate, sometimes it becomes really the next winter cycle where you get the freeze saw, you get other rain that comes in and it's just the difficulty of the older city and widely variant factors that play in the initial event than the actual repair.
Ms. Ross.
So the changes that we made a couple of years ago, have they served us well? I mean, have we, have they, the contractor's been responsible in coming back to fix issues when they haven't, they, you know, when they come or...
I think so, but I haven't reviewed actual complaints and follow-up.
Well, I can speak to one of them on Eastern Avenue. Whatever happened, it didn't work the first time and they came back through and they repaid the whole thing and it was done in a matter of weeks on Eastern Avenue right before you get to Elmer Avenue School. So I think, I think they're, they're making a good effort personally, I mean, just from what I've seen with it. Sir.
I was just wondering, in terms of all this, has the, for the engineer been a part of the discussion in terms of making this change in how we do that?
Right now, it's just a discussion. I mean, talk to the engineer a little bit, but nothing formally, just to try to see if there are any bad ideas on before seeing if there was worthwhile moving forward or not. And if it was, then certainly incorporate him much deeper in discussion. Mr. Iggy.
Do we have one inspector? Is that, do you have right now?
I believe so, yes.
One inspector.
Okay. So I guess that's about it. See if, if there's any ideas, you can certainly contact the rest of us, but I thought it was worthwhile bringing up because I know I get a number of complaints and I'm sure Mr. Iggy does as well. So just wanted to see if there was something we could bring to the attention. All right. Next on the agenda is the property tax late fee. Again, another discussion issue, but the only reason this came to my attention is because I actually got a late fee when I, when I moved to my new house. And to me, I mean, I paid the bill, it's beyond...
And we appreciate that.
It's beyond that, but when I got the, wasn't even brought to my attention until I got something from the school district and there were three late fees. And I said, I called up Ann Testa and I said, you know, what's the deal here? I didn't get a bill, now I got three late fees. And the comment was quite stupid, in my opinion, was you should know to call in and get your bill. And every other business in the world sends out a bill. Why can't the city and the school district send out a bill?
To a new property.
To a new property.
New property, let's be clear.
I'm not talking about an old property. If you, you moved and Karen was my agent.
So I just want to comment here. Nine times, nine times out of 10, there's an escrow involved and there was no escrow involved with this. So there was no forwarding of any... So there was no forwarding of any tax bills to Mr. Paul May. And unfortunately, the city didn't notify him until it was, or the school district, until it was three times late, three late fees. So I don't know how to, I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that it's due to the fact that there, you know, there was no escrow involved, and there was, if there's an escrow agent involved, it usually is not an issue, because there's enough funds that are collected and they are escrowed and it's paid. But if there's no escrow, then there's definitely a concern or an issue here, because you're not receiving the bill unless the previous owner is nice enough to forward it on to you, which I, you know, doesn't happen.
It happened on the city end as well, and again, not about me, but if you're new to the city and you have this situation, this is the first interaction you have with the city government, or more importantly, the school district, you're thinking, what kind of place do I move to? And, you know.
My understanding, the law currently says that if you get a tax bill and you sell a property, you're supposed to forward it.
You are supposed to forward it.
And then the other aspect of it is, we do it every day, is verify payment of taxes, anybody calling, since we're right here, that will verify if taxes are paid for closing, that's kind of standard.
It's not, the issue is the fact that there was, there was no escrow involved. If there's an escrow involved, and the fact that taxes are escrowed and paid when they're due, and the challenge here is that the bill was mailed and forwarded on to the previous owner, never sent back to, you know, the other address, unfortunately. And I don't know if the, you know, I don't know what happened with the other bill that would have come out. I mean, you ended up with three, with three late fees because of the fact that he never received anything based on the forwarding. So, and I don't know if there's, I don't know what the answer is, quite frankly. If there was an escrow, this would not happen.
Well, I got other communications from the city at the house. So that's, my question is, why can't the tax bills be sent to individuals moving to their new address as well?
They're sent to the address that's unfiled from the property owner. So if it's transferred, then you give us the updated information, and we will then forward, or not forward, mail the tax bills to whatever address it's on record.
It's a good start for closure, don't they?
No. I'm just thinking about other people. Like I said, if you're new to the city and this is your first introduction to the school district or the city government, I would be quite peeved, and I think rightfully so.
I understand the frustration, but if you're doing a closing, buying a property, you want to call and verify that the taxes are paid. We do that every day, we provide that certification on, pretty much on demand, but correct somebody calling?
Correct, and if you call and request a bill, we get sent to you.
Yeah, that's my point. You shouldn't have to call and request the bill. Other information is mailed to individuals who moved to their new house. Any other company sends out a bill. The government in a form is a business, send the bill out.
As you, as you know, we send out tax bills once a year, so in the middle of the year, if you're getting a new bill, if you inform us, we send you a bill. Otherwise, we're just going to take orders.
All right, forget it. Moving on. Ms. Paraz, a local 158 contract.
Yep, I got a couple phone calls from some members that they were just asking why this wasn't moving forward, because I guess they voted on it in August, but it hasn't come around, so I'm just checking out the status of how we can get these people their raises retroactively and move in a polar direction with doing our part of it.
It's been voted through before, I'll if I receive that notification, if they've notified you.
And I think that there was some weird timing with this, because as of, in September, we were trying to find out the status, and then in October, we received notification that they had passed it, it was in the middle of budget season. And one of the problems that might have happened with this, when it was finalized, when I was out, my fraternity leaves, so I didn't bring it forward to the council, and then I didn't find out that it was finalized until a while after I got back. So that is something that we can discuss in an executive session, the status of that, and see if we're ready to move forward.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I think it's recess.
Oh, yes, recess, sorry, you just said executive session. Motion to recess. Second. All in favor? Aye. We kind of opened City Planning and Development. The first item on the agenda is the transfer of one-on-one forested areas to the Boys and Girls Club of Schenectady, and Andrew, you're up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't think we need pictures.
Yeah.
We know where this is, we're very familiar with this whole project. Yeah, thank you.
And this was the parcel land that we alienated for the Boys and Girls Club, required us to do the alienation, send the legislation to the state legislature. They in fact alienated the park land, the intended owner of the property was going to always be the Boys and Girls Club, closing now, and that paperwork is more of a complicated, we did the initial request, had to send it to the legislature when the bill was introduced, and we did the follow-up bill. And so what, asking the council to do now is just a simple resolution transferring, or authorizing the transfer and sale to the Boys and Girls Club.
I think I'll move really quick with that. There was a closing on this property already. The paperwork that, the resolutions account was previously authorized, had some language that title insurance company found sufficient to support the sale, but it's not the standard language we normally do for sale. So what I told them is, take it however you want, we gave them our signed D, but then we were going to come back and do it the same way we always do, just so if somebody's looking at it 30 years down the line, there's no question that this is what the council intended to do.
So you're basically just correcting the language within the resolution?
It's conforming the language in the standard terms.
Since we're making it clearer, from our perspective, that the council authorized the transfer. From the title's perspective, they thought that what we had already done, what the council had already done was fine, or it was titleable. Here, we're just following up with the way we typically do everything, following our protocol.
Any questions?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the next item is on the agenda, and I believe we need to go into executive session four, due to the negotiation and sale of properties. Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we're in the executive session.
I'm going to call claims to order first.
Oh, you know, they do, all right. Well, everything in claims goes into a session.
Because you're going into the second session in the city about the planning, and you're...
It's first, like sometimes we do that so we can get big enough to wait, call them out, hold them, run them. Somebody. Yes, they, anyway, she's not here.